Facility handicap accessible, and it wasn't. My concerns has more to do with the expenditure, the value, the natural concerns with the floodwaters. I heard the gentleman say, if it's floodwater, you're not going to clean it. How many times have we seen that flood? So, at this time, I'm, and again, this is one minute left of me. Go ahead, somebody else who cares telling you what they think. I don't.
I agree, I don't support either. Some of the same, and I just don't see the money being spent marketed in other areas. That is a deal.
Can you elaborate on that, where, because this money would be fundraised?
Well, you know, that's what baseball fields and then we're still, you know, forty thousand a year or so. You know, from what I hear from people, you know, and whatever, it's not a priority. And, you know, if the community tells you that it's not a priority, that they don't see the benefit of spending that amount of money on the field, then that's where the rest will come in.
Hi, Kate. Just in response to that, and I've got to make up my mind, I'm going to be very interested in creating the discussion about it in the future. But I think that there is a misunderstanding out there that we would be using taxpayer money for this, and we won't be using taxpayer money for this if we decide to proceed. It's going to be all from pledges and all donated money, isn't that correct, Doctor?
That is correct. I mean, from the standpoint that I think we got off on a bad start when the reporter had talked about using the general fund, and that was a mistake, and I contacted them right away and they corrected that. So, I mean, there's no ill will there, but it was a mistake. And then, what I've said compared to the other project, I mean, with the exception of Linda, we all sat here at that point about four years ago, we got to a really high number at the current building project, and we had to move on it and hope that money would come in as we built it, or we had to essentially give the money back. And we at that time took the risk of saying, let's move ahead, let's build it, and let's hope that the funds come in. Always in the back of our mind, I think, with what Mrs. Nagel was saying, thinking that the district should have some responsibility in the handicap accessibility feature, so I think we could still discuss that. What we've talked about, as Mrs. Hayes said, is the pledges, and in order to get people to be able to pledge amounts that they feel good about, it might take them more than one year in order to do it. So, the concept was, that I said, which was possible perhaps with your approval, would be to say, well, once we have the pledges and the amount of the project costs, with your permission, perhaps we could use the fund balance, which is a reserve fund, knowing that this was supposed to be the other project that we had to pledge. That was, that's the discussion. Do I think the district could have some skinniness too? Yes, from the standpoint of the lights, which, you know, that in the long range capital time, they're going to have to be replaced. Definitely, the lights are a very small component of the overall project.
Yes, and the original project, it wasn't 2.3 million or 2.1 million all at once. That was the final, but there's different stages to it. I definitely understand your concerns about that because we are short, we have a beautiful facility. One thing to look at, it gives us, if we do move forward and do fruit field, it gives us more ground because we're taking away the hard ground that can't absorb any moisture. And that's been, that's, you know, been very clear, Rettler's been very clear with us on that. I love this community, love fruit field. I've had many, many people, as all of you have, heard positive and negative about doing this, because there are concerns about the money, and I definitely have concerns about the money. But when I look at how this community has celebrated the success of our students, and we all saw that today, and we saw that at our previous meeting, unfortunately, we have so much negativity also going on. I had just worked for a company that went out of business after being in business for over a hundred years and found a lack, Kramer Pharmacy. And our downtown is so quiet, and I have to be real honest, I feel, and I actually had a gentleman say, don't you dare tell me it's going to increase economic value in our community. Well, it definitely is, because it opens up, if you look at Oshkosh and what UWO has been able to do in their community, they've gone from approximately, I think, twenty to twenty-five events a year, now they host over two hundred events a year at the stadium. They have a multitude of schools using it. We would be able to eventually host events like that over to our public. And so many people have said to me, oh, it's just about football, it's just about football. No, it's not anymore. This is a facility that is about our community. It's tradition, it's not only, of course, it's meeting football, but what about those kids that play soccer and have never been able to play a game on the historic fruit field? And someday, they would be able to do that.
Is that really a thing?
Yeah, really. Well, you never know.
And you talk about the economic pressures, then, how do you think that people, I mean, the poverty rate is just raising every year, but how do you think people would be willing to fund that?
People coming into our community because of concerts?
No, no, I'm saying, you know, you said it's going to be paid for by donation, well, who is going to be the donating people if the economy is so depressed in town? The public is not going to be donating because, you know, they're hurting, and so to assume that you're going to receive donations to cover it, I mean, that's like a big assumption.
I understand your change of opinion. I think you can equip that with the water shop, and how many people come out of town and come in for different events that are helped there. And that's quite a high number, and that does help the economy.
And Blue Line, for instance, really helps the economy. They do B A M competitions. To me, and I understand, I completely understand the reservation, but it's not just about one group of people anymore.
Let me tell you what, let me just, and then I'll tell you, I feel like, I'm not, I'm not going to put one dollar on the fund balance. You get all the money and donate it, put it in an escrow, when you come up with all that money, then we'll talk about it, okay? But I think every year, we're dealing with budget programs, coming up with deficits there, and I think what we probably should talk about is a referendum about some of the building infrastructure that we're having problems with. That's what we should talk about, because sooner or later, we can't budget every time with all these buildings that are getting ancient. They really are. That's something we're going to have to talk about, not, not, I think, by the sky, because I just, I can't, from a conscious state, think about moving that at all, because we're dealing with issues every year without having to worry about that. And I think, I mean, Rettler's going to tell you what he wants, it's the salesmen, you don't buy the car, some people you don't like, you don't buy insurance, some you don't like. I couldn't even listen to what he had to say, because I try to stay up on things, but that was kind of took me out of guard, that thing went on. But I can't, with all the other things that we've got going on, if we're going to talk about some of these buildings that are going to need some ancient work coming up, that's something that we should talk about for, you know, a year or two or something like that, to that kind of thing.
And my, I have a couple of points. What was the origin of this whole idea? Because, you know, I've had people confront me and say, why are you guys doing this? Why are you guys looking into this? We didn't, as a group, come up and say, hey, let's look into this. How did this come about?
We've talked about it for a couple of years already.
I know it was an idea.
Yeah, people are friendly with me.
Sure, me, John, our directors, Dave, Kevin before that, looked at, could we write like the grassroots foundation grant in order to get it? Basically, from the standpoint that we have to really try to keep people off of it now in order to keep it in good shape. It's always struggling to be in good shape, and the fact that we put the building on it, and I thought it would be a great way for us to start to raise more revenue to pay off the building, because we would use it so much significantly more, and we'd be able to, as Julie said, bring in lots of different groups, have lots of different opportunities to play on. So, when we talked about it, we thought that Julie and I talked about, in order to actually show you something of what it would look like, we thought having some kind of site master plan could help you to see this is what it would look like, and knowing it would go forward with the project, a portion, if not all of that cost, would go back into the project, so it would be cost neutral essentially, if we were to move forward. So, that was the emphasis of getting the corporation involved, to show you kind of what it would look like, and with the concept of, you know, we would give the pledges in the community, if you're opposed to using a fund balance, completely understand that, but if you're open to us looking at, could we raise the money in order to do it, and see how long that takes, that's another way we could, another way we could look at it.
And I have not, in this process, any sentiments from band director, soccer coach, football coaches as to what are their thoughts about this, and do they like artificial turf? Do they, do they not like it?
Dave for sure, Dave for sure, somehow.
Yeah.
I'll come a little closer, so I don't have to.
I'm guessing you can't share the band director's perspective?
I can't. I did speak with Matt and with Chris, because it was something we talked about, we mentioned that it was something we could use for marching band competitions and things like that, that they do right now, Bull's Stomach Greenfield and other areas that do have the artificial turf. It was something he was interested. The one thing they were concerned with was storage, because at fruit field, there is not a ton of it. So, one of the things was, you know, the logistical part of transporting their equipment back and forth to have practices down there. Right now, you know, that they do use the parking lot, they do use the football field there, they do share that for J F L times. So, that can be a bit of an issue. I have spoken to both soccer coaches, I've talked to Coach Peterson and Coach O'Connor, both of which are very interested in pursuing it, both have sent many questions to me, asking, again, logistical things, and how that would go. They both have talked to their booster clubs and moved in that direction to kind of give them a idea that this is something that could be coming. And we have talked to the football coaches, again, which are in favor. We've talked to our youth programs, who are in favor of the opportunity to use it. I've talked to Coach Paulson, Coach Sicular, about using the field as a spring practice area when the fields are going to wet, like, we probably won't have springs like this every year where the snow is gone before the middle of March.
And that's for softball and baseball.
Yeah, softball and baseball, we'd be able to use that as a, as a practice area before the season would begin. Many of the college universities use their artificial turfs as softball fields, because you can't put a 200-foot fence out there and be able to use that for games before this, so we wouldn't have to cancel as many things as we have in the past. So, there are many possibilities, at least within our own high school athletic department, that we could use it as opportunities for those kids, and within the band department.
So, is the loss of the track?
So, we went through. Yeah, absolutely, you know, that's obviously another concern, and it's one of the things that we have to talk to our track coaches about, and we have looked at the schedule, it's one of the nice things about the middle school schedules, we can kind of manipulate when we host and make sure that those are the days where our track teams are at events. I mean, as, if any of you have had track athletes, you know that there are eighteen to seventeen meets a year, so we can use those days as days to host our middle school meets that we host through the conference, when we have the ability to schedule those.
So, all the track activity would go to the high school?
Go to the high school, similar to the way it was for just when they did the four A and got that finished off.
We worked, they worked out, actually, very nice.
Thank you for making all those contacts and giving all those.
Absolutely, that's part of the position, that was part of my job, absolutely. And if any of you have any other questions tonight or in the future, please feel free.
Can I clarify the soccer thing? Because when I think of a soccer turf, I think of multiple games going on at once. It seems to me that we have one.
One of the things we can use, for the, I'll just use the high school example, when we host our invites and those types of things, we use the one main field and that's it. The only time we really use the side fields for our, excuse me, for our high school events is for J D.
Okay, so in high school, it is only one field playing?
It's one field.
There are soccer fields over in the.
Was it, for youth association? Yeah, they have the one. We have the one main field that they use.
And may I ask, who all uses it besides us? Is it just us, or does W L A say?
The facility, the soccer facility?
The, the main field.
Sure, main field, yes, W L A uses it, Springs uses it.
Okay, okay.
Okay, well, I'm going to ask, has there been any discussion with Springs about funding for the, I just put it in a term, excuse me?
Yeah, way back, August, and at that time, they're still raising money for the school under the George Floyd. That was before we had had any real traction with, that didn't start until September and subsequent until October, probably, July, early. So, I could certainly revisit it, I think they would certainly be able to figure out several years that turf field would be, obviously, to their advantage as well. One of the challenges that they had this year, as one example, was we had three home games, they had three home games, but quite honestly, you can't play two back-to-back games on grass, so they had to play their games in a pond lack of turf field they could play here, which would be something they would like and appreciate. So, we could certainly talk about it.
Something, I have spoken with Count Krueger at Springs, if there's something that they would be interested in at least discussing, something we talked about, let's say. Also, just to give you an idea, with our level two and level three, you know, football games, we brought in about nine thousand dollars a game, is what we can bring in. So, there are opportunities to raise funds that way through those events, and if you look at a situation like Middleton, which hosts four level four games in a weekend, it's a large amount of funds that we could, we could definitely start bringing in to the.
Or that's playoff.
The playoff games, yes.
Does the Springs and W L A pays?
Springs, Springs uses our field, W L A does not, but there is a fee at this time that they pay.
Fruit field, the Springs does pay a per game fee. It's an hourly rate, and then they pay the custodial overtime as well. So, last year, for example, because they didn't play all the playoff games here, there was like 2,600 or something. The year before, where they had an opportunity to play more playoff games here, it was two over five thousand. So, it's somewhere in that ballpark, in other words. I think if it was an, if it was a synthetic turf field, I think we would certainly want to reconsider what the rental rate would be, because I think that would be the same rate anymore.
In the Bucks Valley, most of the schools in the Bucks Valley have turf.
It's very hard. No. Most, yeah, I mean, I don't want to hear anything. I was specific.
Oh, sure, well, all three Appletons put it in.
I think we are, right now, Hornville is under raising towards, towards willing, and they would be the last of the M D As.
If somebody came and said, I've got a whole amount of money here, and now, you know, we'll fund it, that's great, but, you know, a burden to answer, which I could go, I just can't, you know, see that as something that, you know, might happen, and then when it doesn't, then, you know, we're stuck with owing money again, you know, and we've been cutting salaries and benefits, I just don't think that was going to.
I just have another question. Is it possible to get some data from Middleton or some of the schools that ran out their field, that we could see what happened? I, you know, I'm concerned again, too, that I, I just want to get some class. I'd like to see, we could get some data from some of the schools who have granted their facilities, how much they brought in, maybe over a five-year period or something, if that's not too difficult.
I think that's the actual idea.
Well, yes, Rettler showed us that, as Lo Mi Ra has this field.
Yep.
I, I can't believe they're doing 200 things a year in Lo Mi Ra.
Well, I can't.
West Capier has this field, but what is their added use? I know they're budgeting 500,000 for replacement on that field when they have to do it, not 350. That scares me too, that estimate was a little not accurate, but, you know, what's happened since West Capier got their field? What are they doing that they didn't do before?
Well, West Bend has it.
The Valley Rabbit is what they're asking for.
Correct. The three Appletons just put it in, Takana just put it in, so they wouldn't be good. Kimberley has had it for some time, P W O. You know, we can get lots of, Man Talk's putting it in, and there's lots of examples that we could, we could get.
What I'm not like, what Rettler tried to sell us, though, too, is that noticing from this field, and everybody came all over to use it, but everybody around here, they're not going to come to us anyway, so that's.
And then, what are you going to do for the maintenance, replacement? Are you going to raise funds again? I mean.
Well, the revenues, too, that are brought in from the use of it, that's what you hope those revenues are going to go towards.
One of the nice things about the pond lack in the state of Spence is it's a very central location, and the fact that when we have schools, level four games, that you have, say, football, for example, they're going to look for a neutral site that's about halfway from, so when you have schools, you have Kimberley, you know, playing Marquette, we're in the actual middle spot for that, for that area. So, those are the nice things that you can, you know, have the W A can have, you know, so that's, that's.
Are you saying that all these schools who put it in are running out their field?
A lot of them will put it in, some of them will not.
I, I also, I don't know if it's too difficult, but I'd like to see what all those schools in the Bucks Valley have in doing, how many of them actually ran out their fields, and I think.
I can get that, I can get their M D A conference numbers, and I can get that.
Big misunderstanding, I would just like to add, that I think I hear the group saying they would like more information about what our surrounding areas are doing, some of the financial data, and then pull it back together and do some more studies, what I think I'm hearing.
Okay.
Because I think it's fair.
Aside from the money, I just want to reiterate, I think, I'm really concerned about the studies of doing this. I mean, you're talking about a place where once the river floods that once, it's going to, the soap is going to destroy it. So, we have, we have nowhere else in town, I mean, I don't, for this, it's around, but it's just not in a right place to do any improvements, I think. I mean, we have football field out at the high school, and more parking out there, you know, when you talk about people coming here for a state game, where are they going to park? This neighborhood is going to be packed, and, you know, the neighbors are going to be irritated with us, and we just, just thinking a couple of.
Well, but I think people are used to that, because the attendance for our games has gone up so much, the whole upper area, all the streets, I don't.
I'm just thinking, you know, other places in town, you know, we've got real estate out at the high school, where we've got, we've got a whole, we do.
We do.
What would be, would it make sense to build that up? Because we've got, we're out of, you know, outside the residential area, we've got parking, we've got places with stands, and.
I think that's a nice.
I don't know.
I think it's a nice, and it's a nice thought, I mean, what we've talked about over the years, I mean, John could go back several years before the apartments were built there, that land was for sale right in front of the high schools, we talked, they talked about that before I was here, that didn't happen. And then, you know, in the middle 2000s, in a referendum, we put leechers, replaced the leechers at fruit field, and then, more recently, we put the building entrance at fruit field. So, essentially, we committed, yeah, we committed to the site.
I just, I'm just really concerned about putting that kind of investment, you know, like, like putting your fine china in front of your toddler, I don't know, I'm just worried about that.
It's a fair thing.
Yeah, I don't know if we can get someone out, we, obviously, Rettler's going to say, oh, it's going to be fine, but is there someone?
Some data, like on how would.
Some other data, yeah, I mean, how, I mean, we're going to get a sample data in 2008, I mean, a rate to prevent that, or, you know, what other precautions we have to take to, you know, ensure that this thing is not going to be, I mean, the rainwater, fine, but the river waters, they have different sources.
Yeah, I mean, he did say it won't backflow, but it can still go over the banks.
Yeah, you're talking about, you know, all the things that are going to put the runoff and all that, I mean, I just can't imagine that ecologically being solved. Does that make sense?
That concerns me too, and I'd like to see, I'd like to have us get a written report explaining why that, why that problem will be resolved.
We can get the information. I know they've met with the city engineers multiple times, researching it, but, okay, we can have that.
Sure.
Yeah, but even since 2008, you've seen water, and we've seen water.
We absolutely.
It's not, it's not been resolved since then, so what do we have to do to resolve that issue? Because I'm very concerned about that, so it's been a little too much.
And I agree with you, and fortunately, like I said before, removing the track, that gives us so much more ground.
Absorption.
Yes, yeah.
But if that's for rainwater, I mean, you're talking to the silty river water, that's infilling the gravel, and you're going to have, you know, lessons to repeat after that.
The other issue that I've been hearing about from people who have called or emailed me are, what about recent data on injuries? And has the turf improved over the years, and can we get some?
We have some stuff like that.
Data, information on the injury.
Absolutely, that is a concern.
Or heat concerns, too, it gets much, much hotter than natural turf.
A lot of the stuff that you guys are asking, or the question, number of questions that people have asked in the last, I think there's a lot of data that's been put out there.
Independently.
Studies that we can get.
I think it'd be a good idea from the board to put together some written facts on all of these issues that we're talking about, so that the public could come in and pick up a document that would say, well, you know, here's something of information about the foot, here's some information about turf and access, here's the information on how often do we have to replace or address the maintenance.
And where is the money coming from, like you said, because many people are concerned that we're taking money from teaching sellers, or taking money from band uniform, and taking money from other sources to get this, but it's.
So, I think that we have to have a plan to how we go on making, without, without taking money from salaries or benefits, or real, and I think, I think Mark has a very good point. We've already been sort of, not really talking about it, but thinking about our buildings and how we have to keep them up, and the only way to do that is probably to go to referendum and see what Oshkosh is doing. And I'm not saying we're going to do that, but they have found themselves in a drastic place of having to have a referendum of 28 million, and they're going to go seven years, four million a year, I think that's what they're doing, that's what I heard at a recent meeting that I had. So, those are, those are things that are key to the education of our children, are the buildings, and we were fortunate, and I know you know this, but just to remind the public, we were fortunate when we passed that last referendum, and we were able, not only to build the new high school, but to take care of ropes at various schools, and libraries, and rugs that people were turning over, and now we're getting to that point where those are going to become issues. So, and I know you know that, I'm.
If anything, we can discuss. I would see the board of education during the workshop, if it can, in a second session, consider students close to the 1908, which was the subject of any judicial or project trial, reviewing for a bad government, as contributing financial, medical, social, corporate history for disciplinary data, for the person, for the elementary administration, that could have been all for investigation, strategies, which could express success for, care of the device, which discussed the power that would be likely to manage children, ever suspected of compensation, if any person interfered in such history for data that is involved or has problems or is that being.
May I just ask people in Calverell, is everyone comfortable with where we are at at this time with fruit field?
Okay, well, I thought the discussion was cut off pretty quickly.
I did as well.
Well, I think pretty much that we wanted more information.
We could put some more things together.
That's what I heard.
Just want to be respectful of everyone.
Yeah, right, I mean, we could sit there, talk for another hour, but it's not going to get us anymore.
Just want to make sure, again.
Who seconded that motion?
I did. Thank you. Any further questions or further discussion?
So, we will visit this in a future workshop.
We will be revisiting this, thank you very much. Will the clerk please call the roll? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Hayes, yes, Joan, Trugella, Nagel, Grant, Houston, next.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Hayes, workshop adjourned. Okay, I'm about, I'd like just a few minutes before we start the discussion.
I do.